Since this is a special meeting, we will, I will call the meeting to order and we will stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Pledge, please call the roll.
Trustee Bell?
Here.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Jocinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Okay, before we get started with the business, I just wanted to read a brief statement, basically for the record, and it goes as follows: When I ran for mayor, I did so because I believed that I could help lead this village forward. At every turn, our forces of status quo have sought to move us backward. In fact, one of the trustees has filed a lawsuit against me and the village board alleging she has been denied access to financial records for the village and the mismanagement of funds. While I would not try this case in public, she knows that is not true. The resolutions and ordinances that you seek to pass today are an attempt to impede the government and effectively tie the hands of the... The resolutions and ordinances would be costly to the village and create chaos for this administration, which would cause disruption in our ability to serve the residents. Your actions today are unnecessary and unreasonable. I urge you to allow the litigation to run its course, and you will see that our government has been totally honest and transparent regarding our operations. I urge you to vote, Board, on these resolutions and ordinances. To vote, know that to seek it to undermine our administration and impede our ability to lead, please consider your oath of office and put the politics out and put the people first. Thank you. With that being said, I will go with the first order, and also, I just wanted to make a statement to the Board that these particular motions that we're passing or that we're bringing in today were never discussed at a committee meeting, never discussed in front of the public, never asked, there's been no questions were ever able to ask about this. This is something that I was ridiculed many times about not being transparent, and let's talk about this. I'm hoping that the trustees here that vote this remember the reason why you got elected is to put the village first, personalizations second. We're here to serve the people. If there's something you don't like about me, then that's what we need to talk about, but not cost the village money, impede progress, because the things that are in here today that I saw yesterday when I got the copies Sunday, rather, it seemed like it was a lot of personalizations in there, and we need to talk about it. I mean, to remove people from a position that they have done a yeoman's job in moving this village forward, brought hundreds of thousands, even millions of dollars here to this village, to say that there's something wrong, to say that they don't know their job, and not even talk about it, just let's vote on it to take this personal. As one of the statements said, "To find out, prosecute." I mean, the people that we're talking about don't touch the money, they have nothing to vote on, they don't sign any checks, anything like that. So, for that reason, that's why I said that it's personal. I'm not going to belabor on this. The Board called this special meeting, I preside over it, and I do have questions at each and every step of the way, but with no more. But right now, we'll go with the first motion, and there was a motion to approve and ordinance amended Chapter 2 administration of the Village of Sauk Village Municipal Code, authorizing and retention by the Board of Trustees of this logistic, I'm sorry, yeah, Legislative Special Counsel. My understanding for that, and I'll ask for a motion for that, my understanding for that is that you want a separate attorney. We don't need another attorney, but if that's what you want, then, okay, so, I don't understand why we need two attorneys, where are you going to get this money from? I understand that, you know, you may think this village is strapped that way, but I can use the money for fifty-fifty sidewalk projects and refurbishing the streets and also taking care of the infrastructure. So, that's the first motion that's on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by?
Trustee Brewer.
Brewer, second by trustee Williams. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If you look at page two of the ordinance, it says at the very bottom Legislative Special Counsel. When, from time to time, it is found to be in the best interest of the Village of Sauk Village for the trustees to retain independent Legislative Special Counsel, the Board of Trustees may choose to do so by resolution. This will be brought before the Board, it will be agreed to by majority vote of the Board. Nobody is trying to spend any money without the residents and the Board understanding what's to be done. This is not costing anything until, which time it becomes necessary to retain Special Counsel, and again, for the best interests of the Village of Sauk Village, and we will have to do so by resolution, which will be brought to a committee meeting and voted on by a regular Board meeting. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay, trustee, you have in your, on these motions to retain a law firm?
If you read the ordinance, Mr. Mayor, it says when?
No, I'm talking about item number six, authorizing...
That's a different resolution, so when we get to that resolution...
You're looking to retain another law firm?
You're moving from one to six. At this point, we're on number one, and I'm explaining how this is not costing the residents money. As we go from item to item, can we discuss them one at a time, please?
Okay, well, then, that item, I'd still like to know, how can you retain a law firm without spending money?
When we get to number six, Mr. Mayor, maybe that'll be made clear.
I'm asking now, you're saying to offer, to, I ordered to amend chapter to authorize the retention by the Board of Trustees, basically to retain Special Counsel. So, how can you do that without money?
I've made my statements.
I guess, okay, trustee.
So, I mean, it says, the first sentence, "When," from time to time, to me, that sounds so subjective, like, what does "from time to time" mean? And it sounds like when you want to hire a Legislative Special Counsel, that you must think there is something wrong, otherwise you wouldn't hire one on a retainer. So, obviously, there is intent there to use the Legislative Special Counsel and also keep on alternate and pay them for a service. Also, on page three of the resolution here, I'm sorry, on the ordinance, it says, "The Independent Legislative Special Counsel shall be retained as independent contractor at a rate authorized by the Village Board." What rate is that? I have not seen any figures come across. It sounds like right now that we approved this, then we get the rate later, but, I mean, to me, that's not right. I know that you're going to bring it back before the Board, but there should be some kind of rate in mind, or at least, right now, we should know some kind of rate of what we expect to pay. What if it's a blank check? What if it's $400 an hour? That's ridiculous. What if it's $500 an hour? That's ridiculous. I mean, there should be some kind of rate now, what the residents expect to pay, and residents should know what they expect to pay.
Do you have a question? Before we go further, I forgot to ask the question. These resolutions and ordinances I thought would go before the ordinance committee, and obviously, because every time we brought a resolution or ordinance to the Board, and prior, we brought it to the ordinance committee, review committee, for them to look at it. I was never told of this, I see it was written by Attorney Olson de Sturck, and I was never told, they didn't write this in one day, so, I was never told about this, so, that's something that's very disturbing to me, because I was never told about this ordinance even existing, that I was even thinking about drafting this up, and I seen I was penned by our, I mean, our attorneys that we have, so, just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Well, I just want to let you know, Mr. Mayor, not all the ordinances come through the ordinance review committee. There's a lot, no, and look back for two years, and how many ordinances have been passed? How many have come through the committee? There's a lot that don't come through this committee. This has not come through our committee.
Okay, I thought, especially a brand-new ordinance, I would think that it would come, because this is an amending, I thought we would at least discuss it. I thought it would be at least discussed at a committee meeting. I was jumped on about that a while back, because, but like I said before, this seems like it's personal. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Jocinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Motion to approve an ordinance adopting a village attorney policy for the Village of
I make that motion?
I'll second.
Moved by trustee Williams, and seconded by trustee Bell. Any questions?
Question. So, Mr. Mayor, again, this wasn't discussed at all in a committee meeting or executive session or anything at all. On exhibit A on the back, it says, "Item A, Duties Generally. Prepare Certain Contracts, Leases, Deeds, and Other Legal Documents Which May Be Required by the Village Attorney by the Board of Trustees or any committee thereof and shall draw all ordinance resolutions, rules, and regulations to the village." What does "prepare certain" mean? I mean, is there, why not all? Why is it just certain contracts? What is this attorney policy? Well, what is it for? Olson de Sturck is our legal counsel, he represents us, and also, we have another law firm for adjudication, so what is this village attorney policy really for? What is it stating?
Your question? I don't know why we needed to adopt a attorney policy. We've had attorneys since I've been involved in the political aspect of Sauk Village, so, why do we need an attorney policy? Myself, I really don't know what that means.
Well, I'll continue on my question.
That's why I was asking, that we needed to have a meeting that we can discuss these questions, not as they're brought to the Board. I really don't understand why now, we're not even, we haven't even discussed this, but you want to vote on it. So, it leads me to believe that there was probably some type of a meeting prior to this, some type of a something that someone agreed on. I can't see that this was just regurgitated just now, or last, or this Sunday when I found out about it. It took a while for somebody to depend this, took, like I said, it took a while for somebody to bring this ordinance in.
Mr. Mayor, another question. So, also on exhibit A, item D, it says, "Attendance at Meetings and Reports. The Village Attorney shall attend the Board meetings of the Board of Trustees and each year make a report to said Board of all suits proceeding or actions prosecuted or defined by him during the proceeding year with the names of the parties, their due good titles, intercourse, yada, yada, yada." Sure, the main point I'm getting at, item D, so, we will have an attorney present at all village meetings, again, like there used to be before this administration took place. The average attorney right now costs $1.65 an hour, so, if you kind of break that out by meeting, this is, will be an extra about $16,000, $17,000 a year, just for an attorney to be sitting here, which is, I mean, do we need it? I don't think we do. We don't use attorneys that much in our meetings now, so, the residents are paying $16,000, $17,000 a year for what?
Is the floor open?
Any questions?
Yes. Okay, first of all, what I'd like to say in regards to all that is, I believe that we've been using at least two other law firms in the past two years, and I don't believe there's been an ordinance that came through or a resolution for either one of them. If I'm wrong, please, please show me where I'm wrong, and please show me where either the Laff Group or the Stutley Group was ever presented to this Board, either in discussion in committee or in an ordinance, and if they're not being retained by the village, again, please tell me where I'm wrong. I'm willing to accept the fact, if I'm wrong, because I'm just getting on the Board, and getting information from the staff at the village hall is extremely difficult, that I would have to only go by assumption and what I'm being told. And what I'm being told is, at least two other law firms have been used for the Village of Sauk Village in the past two years without any referendum, without any resolution or ordinance or discussion from the Board. And again, Mr. Mayor, if I'm wrong, please show me the paperwork that tells me I'm wrong, because I have requested copies of the bills for all attorney fees, all negotiations, everything that has anything to do with legal works, and I was told that I cannot get that information. So, since I can't get the information any other way, yes, I do believe we need some attorneys at our meetings, because I think there's been a lot of things done in the last two years that would have been done differently if the village had legal representation sitting on this dais. Thank you.
Debbie, can you please explain the, so, the cost of this, as I calculated, was roughly $16,000, $17,000. Can you explain how we get that $16,000, $17,000? Like, where would that money come from? That money is not budgeted for, and we don't have it in the budget right now, so, can you explain how we would get that?
If that question is directly to me, then budget's coming, and we have to account for that. I think the fact that we haven't had an attorney in the last two years may have already in the past two years, and we're going to see what has been done, and to see if there's anything that has to be brought back before this Board, because we also believe, this is not personal, and I want the people to know, that when you, this is not personal, and the mayor can talk over me if he wants to. What I'm saying to the people of Sauk Village is, we are going to investigate every move that this Board has made in the past two years. If they're right, that's fine, if it's wrong, you will know about it, and in order for us to know if the actions that were taken were correct, is only if we have the advice of an attorney. And I know for a fact that several things have happened up here on this Board that have been voted on that should not have been or would not have been if we had an attorney sitting on the dais. So, again, please let me reiterate, this is not personal, and when everything does happen at the end of this meeting, it will be done legally, it has been well researched, and it has been well thought out, and it will be open and upfront for the public to see.
Trustee, I appreciate your orientation, I appreciate what you just stated, however, what's the rush? Why are we, have not had a chance to discuss this? Well, this is the first meeting that we've had since you were elected, since, I'm sorry, since you were sworn in. Why couldn't we have a committee meet like we usually do and discuss things that we're going to vote on the following week? What was the reason that was taken away? What's the rush that we had to do this, vote on it, and talk about it at the same time? We've never done that. When you were clerk, we never done that.
You're saying it's never been done in the past two years?
I'm sorry, I'm, can I finish?
I thought you were finished.
No, I wasn't finished. And also, what's the reason? I mean, we've had problems a long time, as I stated before, you were clerk, you knew the problem, it's not just the last two years. Why are we just doing a look at finances for the last two? Why don't we go back to the last 10 years? Why don't we go all the way back to where all this started, to where you know it was a problem, and I know there was a problem? Why don't I go back there? Because I'll tell you now, we're spending money for something that you won't find anything for the last two years. But however, I still ask why we could not have a committee meeting and discuss this? Why do we have to have a special meeting to vote and discuss? I'm still waiting on that answer, I'm waiting on the trustees that signed this to answer the question, why we could not have a committee meeting and discuss the things that you wanted to vote on first before they were brought up for voting? Why was that not done?
Mayor and trustees, I am going to appeal to you to abide by parliamentary procedures relative to your opportunities to speak. Each one can speak two times on one topic, but not until others have had an opportunity to speak. Let's be mindful of that.
I ask the question for any trustee that was implementing this meeting tonight. I'm asking those trustees to let me know why that did not happen, that's all I wanted No one has answered to that reason, that question? But you said it's not personal. Okay, we have a motion on the floor for the attorney policy. Any more questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Jocinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. The next motion. Motion to place Dr. Alicia Strata current human resource consultant. I'll read that again. Current human resources consultant on paid leave pending investigation to actions which may result in her termination. I thought maybe someone would have asked the lawyers about that one, because a consultant is not an employee, it's a consultant. How do you put a consultant? But, as I stated before, this is something that should have been talked about prior to this meeting, and also, the things that are going on that are being done by the human resources consultant, I guess, are going to stop with the different litigations that we have, different negotiations that are in place, and all the other different things that are going on in that particular position that this person is actually doing right now. So, you're saying it's not personal, but it was talked about two years ago when Dr. Strata was brought from Owens Group. I didn't hire Dr. Strata. Dr. Strata was brought in through the Owens Group, and I just retained her because I felt that we needed an HR person at the time, full-time, so we don't have to rely on our lawyers every single time something happens, or we stay in court or in litigation because someone wants to sue us, because we did something wrong as far as one of our employees, five police department, whoever. That has went down. We don't have those lawsuits like that anymore. But, for whatever reason it is, that we want, that you want to do action or take pending actions and result in termination, I don't understand that. Again, why this could not have been talked about separately, but we want to take this out to the public, because, I don't know, maybe, and you say it's not personal. Usually, we don't discuss personnel problems in the public, but I guess this is different this time. I guess now, since we have the new Board, we don't need an executive session, we can discuss everything out in public now. We can bring personalizations out in public, we can bring people's jobs and livelihood and everything else in public now. I always thought that that was taken care of back in the executive session, but I guess that's changed too. So, again, I don't understand what this is about, and why is this person being singled out? For what reason? They sign no checks, they don't pass any legislation, they don't make any decisions. Everything that's brought to, everything that's brought to that person is brought to me. I find out everything that goes on before, and then I bring it to the Board. We have executive session to give an update on how negotiations are going, what type of litigation we have. They give updates. This person, Dr. Strata, gives updates in the executive session. This Board has never been primitive of that, because we never done, it hasn't happened yet, but it's supposed to happen next week, and I even told the Board, someone on the Board asked me, are we going to be brought up speed? And I said, yes, we would at the first Board meeting, which will be next week. They asked me that, and I said, and I said just that. So, again, I mean, if you're saying that it's not personal, I don't know why this is so much personal, and, but you're saying that it's not. So, again, I'm asking the trustees that called this meeting, what's the reason for this? Why did you put this motion in place? And who did you, because no one came to me, so who did you guys talk to, 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 to me? And I ask again, who did you talk to to formulate this? Who was involved in this? I'm sure the law firm just didn't come up with these, so the law firm has to be directed by someone. I'm asking right now on this Board, who directed the law firm to write up the ordinances that we have here? Did anybody answer that question on this Board?
Mr. Mayor, does Dr. Strata have a contract or not?
She has an agreement, sir.
It was stated as a contract.
It does, an agreement.
With her private firm?
With her, no, she doesn't work, she doesn't work for a private firm, sir. Trustee, she does not work for a private firm. She works on her own. These are some of the things that should have been discussed, these are some of the things that we should have discussed at another meeting or whatever, but to do this, and let's go ahead and get rid of this person pending this, this, and this, for what reason, and not know why? I ask again, who on this Board that called this meeting came up with this particular item?
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion on the floor.
I have a question that I'm asking.
So, can we move on?
I have a question, and I'm asking, I have a question.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion on the floor.
Okay, and I have a question. I'm asking, so I'm asking the Board, who on this Board came up with this? Yes, I have the right to ask that question, because had we discussed this, had this been discussed, we would have known as a Board to bring it up, to bring it, so I do have that right to ask now, since no one informed, we didn't have a special meeting, we have a special meeting to vote, that's what this is, to enact legislation, to vote on policies. So, we didn't have a special, we didn't have a meeting to talk about this as we usually do, so, yes, I'm asking the question, can anyone that made this, made these particular motions and put it on this piece of paper and bring it up, who was involved in doing that? Now, if no one was involved in doing that, how did this happen? How did this get written down, if nobody here did that?
Mr. Mayor, but you know what, you can't force them.
I'm not forcing, I'm asking a question.
They're not answering, so we can't...
I'm not, clerk, madam clerk, I'm talking to, I'm talking to the Board, but you're not part of the Board.
Point of order, we have a motion on the floor.
You're not part of the Board, you're not part of the Board.
We have a motion on the floor.
May I address?
If you call the roll.
I'm asking the Board a question, that's all I'm doing, I have the right to do that. Yes, yes.
Could you please repeat who made the motion, who seconded the motion? I didn't think so. Before we move on, can we please have a motion in a second?
Okay, I'm not, before you move to this motion, I'm asking who put this motion together?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, I had the floor. Mr. Attorney, isn't it not proper to take a motion and a second and then have discussion? Or what we're doing here is, we're opening up a motion and we're allowing the mayor to pontificate, and now we're even forgetting that we didn't take a motion or a second, because now we're into discussion. So, if we can please follow the rules, take a motion in a second after the motion is read, then open for discussion, and of course, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to hear your opinion, but before we all start giving our opinion, can we please have a motion in a second on these motions? Because we were about to, we were about to take a roll call without a motion.
I'm asking, okay, I'll defer to the lawyer, since that's what you feel, that, since I don't know, then I'll ask the lawyer, and do I have the right to ask the question, that particular question that I just asked? Do I have the right to do that, sir?
As Mayor, you have the right to always ask questions, but the regular course of business is to have a motion, a second, and then to have open discussion, including questions after the motion.
I'll entertain a motion, then.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Brewer, seconded by trustee Bell. The question still stands that I asked, I'm asking the Board who penned this particular motion.
My only comment to this motion is the fact that this particular person, employee consultant, was given a 20-week, well, actually, it was actually two-year severance pay in the event that her termination had occurred. It just, we found out that according to state statute, that it's only 20 weeks in the event that there was a termination, but when it came on the agenda, it was, she was in fact listed as current human resource consultant. My question is, how many firms or municipalities do you know give two-year severance pay to a consultant? So, I'm sorry, I stand by this motion.
So, just to kind of ask a question here, so, it says, "Motion to place Dr. Alicia So, it says, motion to place Dr. Alicia Strata, current Human Resource Consultant on paid leave pending an investigation into actions. Sounds like you think she's done some actions. The severance pay was not an action by her, it was action by the board. So what actions did she do to warrant an investigation that results in termination? That's what I want to know. So what did Dr. Strata do to?
That's why there's gonna be an investigation.
No, wait, wait, no, trustee, wait, trustee, trustee, on item, option, trustee, on option number, item two. Trustee was, option number two, on, item number two, I'm sorry. You said this would cost the residents no money. That's what you just said. Now you're saying we're gonna do an investigation, which is gonna cost the residents money. So which one is it? Will it not cost the residents money or will it cost the residents money? Because you just said it wouldn't. But again, my question still stands, on what action did Dr. Strata do that she's gonna be investigated as a result in her termination? That's what I want to know.
That's directed to me?
Sure, you're the spokesperson, go ahead.
I'm not the spokesperson, but you call me by name, I feel like I need to answer you. So, my answer to you, sir, is number four is as it is stated. An investigation means we cannot discuss it at this time. If and when there's an investigation, things will come out at that time. I'm not gonna address that right now. So there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Investigate what? Investigate what? What, that's one more, investigate what?
Point of order. Can you call the roll, please?
Investigate what?
Point of order.
Investigate what?
Point of order.
Investigate what?
Point of order.
All the question, please.
And also, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have one more thing. Also, if you are gonna place Dr. Strata on leave with pay, what sense does that make? Let her work. If she's gonna be paid to stay at home, she might as well do some work. That just makes sense to me.
I do have a, um, before the vote, the vote is taken. And, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Mike McGrath, if the vote, before the vote is taken, has there any, been any, um, plans, any thing to, um, because things will stand still. So is there anything, because this motion doesn't say that. It basically says put the person on leave pending an investigation. But the things that are going that are in place now, what happens to those things? What happens to the negotiations? What happens to the day-to-day litigations that are ongoing? The things that are going on in, um, Human Resources that do, that deal with day-to-day employees, what happens to that? They stand still and wait until this board decides on what they want to do? So we just, we just hold the government up until that happens? So that was never, that's why I said this stuff needs to be taped, this particularly needs to be tabled until we come up with a solution. But to vote, to have a person removed until further notice, to me, doesn't make sense. And it is putting, and correct me if I'm wrong, is putting this village in harm's way, number one. And number two, it's gonna cost this village, I'm sorry, it's gonna cost you guys, the taxpayers, money behind this because litigation will come forth. It will happen. So I don't know why you think it won't. But in the meantime, things that are going on in the village are gonna come to a standstill. Is that what you want? The village to be at an impasse until you decide when you want to, or what is it that you want to do? But in the meantime, we're just waiting until you make that decision. That being said, any more questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 No.
Motion carried. Next one. Same thing, different person. I bet it's not personal. And this person is the Director of Code Enforcement and Economic Development. So, I'll ask, I'll do it as trustee said, I'll do it the right way. I'll ask for a motion.
Can we please read the entire motion?
The, oh, I'm sorry. The motion to place Joseph Wizewaite, current Director of Code Enforcement and Economic Development on paid leave, paid leave, excuse me, pending an investigation into actions that may result in his termination. Again, I'll ask for the motion and then I'll ask for the question.
So move. Second.
Move by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Todd. Question. I do have a question. Again, what did this board, and I, obviously, the invisible man is the one that made up all this because I can't get anyone to say who did this. But I'm asking, what are you looking for in a person that does economic development in code? Was it because they uncovered bills that weren't in ordinances, and not ordinances, um, home inspections weren't done properly? Are they investigating that, that that was the reason? I don't know. But I still like to look, who pinned this particular motion? And I guess I'll get the same answer I got for motion number four. Who pinned that motion to put this here, but everybody votes on it? But nobody says, I brought this to, to the board. I put this on paper. Nobody said that, but everybody votes on it. Again, then you're gonna lose money. The village, we have business licenses, we have inspections, we have a lot of different things that are done in this department. And now you want to, all that stuff that we have, we have grants, we just got a grant that has to be administered by the person that went and got the grant, which is the person that you want to put on investigation. I don't know what investigation that you could possibly look into other than how did they get that money and bring it to the village? How did they get that grant and bring it to the village? How were we able to sell that land that nobody wanted to sell? Nobody wanted to bring that business in that we sold for 1.3 million dollars? That they invested 7 million dollars building? And hopefully, and I know we're gonna get jobs out of it and we will get revenue from it. But what investigation is it that we're looking for, for this particular person? It seems like if you do good in the village, you get prosecuted for it. It seems like if you try to bring money into the village or try to move it forward like I'm trying to do, you get prosecuted for it. So I don't understand it myself. I still can't get someone to tell me why this is that way. So I guess we'll wait on whoever it is to, um, tell us when you want to or when they want to, um, do this investigation. In the meantime, this person here, you said, now this person is a employee? So they're on paid leave. That means they're gonna be sitting at home collecting? And we still have to go forth to try to do what is this person was doing? And then, for whatever reason, as far as, um, pending, pending litigation or pending, um, actions to be taken, a termination, I hope that whoever is, whoever this person is that's doing this, really, really think about it. I was hoping this board would think about taking this type of action on a personal, because this is a personal note because this is a person's livelihood. Both of these are these personals, these people's livelihoods. These are a direct character assassination to say that a person who has nothing to do with the money in the village doesn't sign off on anything, that you're doing an investigation and possibly termination for whatever. But, again, there is none. So, I mean, because it was transparent, sir, and I don't want to take questions from the audience. That's, I'm wrong in saying it, so I'll wait till the end, so. Um, but no, it's, but to do that, I don't understand that. So, that being said, are there any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 No.
Motion is carried. It's amazing how you can vote on something but no one wrote it. That's pretty good. Resolution, no, I'm sorry, number six resolution. A resolution authorizing the retention of the attorney John Murphy of Rosenthal Murphy, Cobits, and Donahue as Legislative Special Counsel to investigate, make recommendations, prosecute, and take appropriate legal actions against the Human Resource Consultant and the Director of Code Enforcement and Economic Development on behalf of the board. Now, I will ask the attorney. Since somebody feel that, the attorney is our legal counsel, is this implying something, sir? Is this, this motion, this resolution or whatever, is it implying, is it implying that something was done? Something wrong was done?
As far as your comment, Mayor, I think that what is happening is, history is somewhat repeating itself. As you recall, about five years ago, when you were on the village board, the village board took the same action to remove Henry Turner, who was the village administrator at the time, placed her on paid leave pending an investigation to look into misconduct and failure to perform the functions of her position. That went all the way up to the Illinois Supreme Court. The village board was shown to have acted appropriately. Ms. Turner, as you recall, tried to get her legal fees paid because of the village board's action and that was rejected. The trial court awarded her attorney's fees. We appealed on behalf of the village and the appellate court reversed and none of her attorney's fees were paid. And that was upheld by the Illinois Supreme Court. So, because there's a, uh, open investigation based upon the two prior motions, I'm at liberty to make any statement as to what is being looked into. That is why outside counsel by the village board is being brought in to, to look into, um, certain matters and it's based upon his recommendation, whether or not he will seek termination or not. It's the same law firm that was brought in by the, by the village back five, six years ago. Another municipal firm is well-known, he's lectured, um, and I hope that answers your question.
Well, he's connected to Owens and Sturgis, is that correct? Are they, are they, um, do they do separate, I mean, are they the ones that took Calcom? When we had Calcom and you, Owens and Sturgis did one, Calcom was done with Murphy. Is that the same law firm?
Yeah, well, Calcom is the 911 dispatch in Cal Park.
Right.
We represent the village of Cal Park. I'd have to look, I believe that firm was involved with that. They're a completely separate firm, they're located in Evergreen Park.
Okay, so, I still say that, um, you mentioned that that was the village administrator who is in charge of a lot of different things, in charge of day-to-day operations because the village administration wasn't that tight. Human Resources and Director of Code Enforcement, Economic Development, however, is not. So, again, we're spending money causing lawsuits for a witch hunt and I don't understand it. So, um, so now we're gonna get another law firm involved in this. And this is what the board wants to, um, retain this particular law firm to solely look into the actions against the Human Resource Consultant and the Director of Code Enforcement. Again, we didn't get a chance to talk about it, we didn't get a chance to even ask about what is it that they're looking for? What is it that they're trying to find? Or is it just, we don't want them here and let's get rid of them and hopefully just pay them out? That's what it's saying, because I don't see, there's nothing here that says that, what's the scope? What's the scope of the investigation? Why are we pulling people away from employment, putting them on paid leave, investigating them? But no one can tell me why. It's like if you get pulled over from the, with the police officer, he give you a ticket, but he don't tell you, well, just go to court and that's it. If you ask the officer, why are you giving me a ticket? He just say, go to court, really? And that's due process. Any other, any other question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I see that hourly rate is $170 an hour for this attorney. Um, do we even have an idea of how long this will take? As you know, right now, the Mueller report just got done and it took, that was a two-year investigation. You know how many hours that is in two years? So imagine if this investigation into the Director of Economic Development, HR consultant, takes a year or two. You know how much money that will be on the backs of the residents at $170 an hour? That's kind of ridiculous. And also, who negotiated that rate? I mean, $170 an hour, like where did it come from? Because that's not something that nobody approached us with because it wasn't discussed. So I just want to know where did it come from, if you know.
And then, as was stated though, Mr. McGrath, it was a few years. Someone, the law firm got paid for those years and kept going back and forth to court. So that did cost the village some money, even though that person was found to not be liable, or I'm sorry, they were found to, they took, they, they got rid of that particular position, they got rid of that particular person, but it did cost money, it cost two years going back and forth litigation. Any other questions?
Can we restate or set the motion in a second again, please? Motion? So there, again, there's been no motion.
I thought there was a motion, that's because I said I asked for a question.
Right, this is the problem when we go right into discussion.
This wasn't a motion, this is a resolution authorizing, this was not a motion. This is a resolution that was authorized. There's nothing here that says a motion. It's a resolution authorizing. So now, if there is a motion to that resolution, is that what, is that what this board wants, a motion? Because this doesn't say a motion. It says a resolution.
Mr. Attorney, do we need to amend the? Do we make a motion to pass the resolution?
So move. Second.
Move by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Todd. Again, I still, why this, I do have a question again. Why this resolution was not brought before me? Why it was not told, why did I not know about it? Why wasn't it brought before the board? I'll put it this way, the board as a whole, it wasn't brought before, but you want to vote on it now without having questions, without having talked about it, without having discussed it? So you just want to present a motion or present a resolution and just vote on it?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this, this, again, is $170 an hour. Now, that's a lot of money. Now, let's just say the special counsel, or whatever you want to call him, comes back and says, Director of Economic Development or HR didn't do anything wrong. Then what? And what if the bill is $200,000 for no wrongdoing that happened? So then what's the consequences for us paying $200,000 and there's nothing wrong? There was no investigation, it seems that everything was okay, they didn't do anything wrong, no wrongdoing, no mismanagement, no money was stolen or anything. Then what? We just wasted money, for what?
Again, I don't know, trustee, I guess we have it like that. So, um, the resolution was moved in second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Motion is carried. Number seven. There's a motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter Two of the Administration establishing the position of village administrator. Move by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Todd, I think it was. Todd, I'm sorry, move by trustee Todd, second by trustee Williams. Okay, trustee Todd moved it, second by trustee Brewer. Are there any questions?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Mayor, so, one, why do we need a village administrator? We have had one the last two years. Two, uh, where's the money gonna come from? It's not budgeted for currently, we didn't plan for this to be budgeted for. Uh, I also want to bring your attention to Section 2-306 duties, item C. It says that make recommendations to the board of trustees concerning the classifications and compensation of each employee to the village. Sounds like the village administrator will decide compensation levels for all employees of the village, which kind of doesn't really make sense to me. Also, under compensation, Section 2-307, it says the village administrator shall receive shall receive compensation in such amount and manner as the board of trustees shall fix from time to time by ordinance or contract. Okay, what is that? How much? How, are we talking $100,000, $200,000? Like what compensation are we talking about? And also, as trustee Brewer always says, can we have that right? So, I just don't understand, like how do we just pass this ordinance for a village administrator and don't have any kind of figures as far as compensation in this ordinance? Also, it says the village board shall post and publish by any means, the village board decides the position of village administrator and collectively review all applicants. Sounds like the village board is now human resources, which we just got rid of. So, that really doesn't make sense to me, how the village board is going to interview applicants for this position. But, that's just my comment. The village board will interview applicants for the village administrator position and not human resources.
My question I have, I have to ask to the lawyer, does the board have the right to appoint or the mayor have the right to appoint?
Lawyer, it says that appointment's by the village board.
But, what about our laws as far as the village is concerned? As far as the type of village that we have, does the mayor have the right to appoint? Or are you saying now that the board has...
By state statute, the mayor has certain positions that you have the...
Speaking to my...
I'm sorry. By state statute, the mayor, by that position, has certain positions that it's your appointment with the advice consent of the village board. State statute does not include the village administrator. We went through this years ago, looking into your form of government. A past administration, a past mayor thought it was a strong mayor form of government, is not. It's a board of trustees form of government.
Okay, but that's, but that's being said because with that whole rule, does the mayor have, as again I asked, does the mayor have the right to appoint with the consent of the board? Is that correct? Does the mayor have the right to appoint?
Of certain positions, it's laid out in state statute and it does not include village administrator.
And that says, and that's in the bylaws, that's in our state statute, that's in our laws. I thought that we had, that the mayor did have the right to appoint with the consent.
The village administrator position, as you know, has been on the books, off the books, on the books, off the books, and now working back on the books.
Okay, but it says right here, section two dash three oh five, establish appointment.
Correct.
Okay, the village administrator appoint, I'm sorry, the village board shall appoint the village administrator, the village administrator should be chosen on the basis and also determined the village administrator should be one year unless extended by contract. So, you're saying that the village board has the right to appoint the village administrator? That's what, the way you interpreted it? Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, do we have a salary in mind for this position?
Now, there's nothing on here for compensation, there's nothing, I guess they, I guess the board is going to read it at too, but I don't know. These, I don't know who to ask these questions to because no one can tell me who wrote these particular motions out. So, I, I'm at a loss right now to even find out who wrote these. Everybody's voting on them, someone, everyone's voting on them, but how can you vote as a board if you didn't help put this together? That's the problem that I have. I'm continue to have that problem until someone tells me an answer. How can you vote on something that you had no input in making? How can a person vote on something unless they're told or led to vote on it on something that they didn't have at least a process or input in putting this down and putting this on paper? Someone penned this, it just didn't come out of the sky, but nobody on this board can tell me who did that, but they can vote on it. So, that's what I'm asking. I'll ask, maybe I'm asking the wrong thing. Mr. McGrath, did you come up with these resolutions and motions as the attorney?
Did I provide the language?
I mean, did you, did you write them out?
Did I assist with the language?
You, so someone told you? So, you didn't come up with this yourself, I'm sure. So, someone asked you to pen this, correct?
Don't be sure. That's the point, he was in consultation with members of the village board.
So, there was a meeting between you and the members of the village board that the mayor was not permitted to?
There was no, there was no meeting.
Is the floor open to the trustees or is this between the mayor?
I'm asking, you, the trustee, he's couldn't answer the question.
I'm waiting for the floor open.
So, I'm asking, I'm asking how this got on paper, trustee?
You set the meeting up.
Nobody couldn't answer, I'm asking, so I asked the board.
You set the meeting up, Mayor Burgess.
No, I didn't set this.
Yes, you did. You set a meeting up with the trustees to meet with the attorneys on the orientation, during the orientation. Sir, we can, when we were with the attorneys at a meeting that you set up, this is when this discussion was held. It was not held without the benefit of the mayor because the mayor and the clerk and all trustees were able to come to that orientation.
Asked the board specifically, did you pen this? Did you come up with these motions? Everybody got locked, y'all. Nobody said anything. So, I quit asking the board. So, I said, let me ask another person, and that's what I did, I asked the attorney, did you pen this? He said, yes, with the consult of the board.
At a meeting that you set...
Okay, but no one said, why'd you have a meeting with the attorneys and not, and not bring it to the people? Bring it to the, bring it to the, bring it to somebody. How come you didn't have a meeting? So, all I'm asking is...
Point of order, point of order.
Please, please, I'm not, we're trying to, I'm trying to conduct business. And this is serious business. This is your money that you're going to be mad about when we spend it for litigation and it's not going to be a few thousand, it's going to be a few hundred thousand dollars when this is all taken care of. So, I'm trying to ask these questions now so when it comes back and you see that we can't get that pothole, knock that tree down, or cut grass in that yard or whatever, I don't want to hear when we don't have the money to do that and we can't meet payroll because we had to pay our litigation. All I'm asking is, if you had this meeting, whenever, that was back in, in, in May, when you had the early part of May, how come I didn't know that this meeting exists and it came out of that meeting, these ordinances? So, you're saying that you did that, but no one decided, okay, but I asked the question just now, earlier, did anybody help do this? Nobody said anything. Now, when I asked the lawyers and he said he did consult and talk to you, now everybody wants to chime in now.
Because you basically told a lie, Mr. Mayor. You said, you're trying to make it sound like we called the attorneys and set up a meeting.
No, I didn't say that, I asked you, did you have anything to do with this?
Now, what's personal? Who's being personal now?
I asked you.
Point of order. A proper motion and a second has been made, can we call the roll, please?
We can go through this all day long, regardless of whatever it is. I still, I am still the mayor here, you can take all you want, but you're not going to take away my power to be CFO, CEO of this village. It's not going to happen.
Roberts rules of order.
It's not going to happen. So, I have a question. I have a question. And it's my job to make sure that, that the, that things are being done on the up and up. I asked the question of the board, why and who, and who put this together? Nobody said anything. So, then when I did, I stepped on somebody's toe and said, after the lawyer told me just now that he talked to you guys, okay, could've just said, when we went for orientation, because that's what it was, orientation, we decided to put together this ordinance, this resolution, and to come up with these motions. We asked you to do that, Mr. Lawyer, but nobody said anything about that until now.
Point of order, can we please call the question?
So, now I know where it came from, I know what happened.
Can we call the question?
And that's just what, you, you can call, but, but, but...
Excuse me, sir, point of order, Roberts rules of order. Are we going to run this meeting by Roberts rules of order?
No, I asked, I asked a question, I asked a question, nobody answered until now.
You heard that.
When we found, okay, so you're going to...
Point of order, call the question.
Okay, until, 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 but you, it was no point of order when I asked the question. Now, I asked the question and now, now you... I'm still conducting the meter, I'm trustee, I'm still conducting the meter.
Point of order.
So...
It's been common practice for you to cut me off, so I said...
Excuse me.
So, anyway, now I find out, I need you to tell the board, now that I find out, I see now...
Can we get some officers here? Somebody please call the South Village Police. Somebody please dial the South Village Police officers because we can't get control of
Okay. Nope, no.
Mayor, do you have control of this meeting?
No, I asked a question and my question was answered, finally. Excuse me, excuse me.
I'd like to make a motion to recess for at least 10 minutes, please, so we can get the board under control and the resolution's under control. Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we recess for at least 10 minutes. Thank you. Anybody got a second? Madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Some move.
Motion made by trustee Williams, second by trustee Brewer to go into a 10-minute recess.
Yes.
Madam clerk?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. I call a meeting back to order. Okay, um, the motion is on the floor to approve an ordinance amending, amending chapter two of the administration establishing the position of a village administrator. It's already moved to second.
No, I, I wanted to respond to it, I was waiting for a response to happen. I just want the public to know that in the past administrations, there has been a time where we did not have an HR person and the board did interview the HD administrator. They did the hiring and the firing and the interviewing of the administrator. It's happened at least three times that I know of since 2009. Just so you are aware, some of the things that you're being told today are not exactly 100% true. And that's one thing I know for a fact because I was involved with those discussions when those people were presented to the board to decide on an administrator. As far as the salary, budget discussions have not even happened yet. I would hope that once this passes, if it does, that a salary will be determined by the board as a whole, the way it should be. I just wanted to make that clear. This is not the first time. This has happened time and time again. And I don't know if there is an ordinance on the book for a human resource director and if there's not an ordinance on the book for a human resource director, why are we arguing because this board's trying to do the right thing? Thank you.
Madam trustee, everything but the last thing, it hasn't, we're not talking about the human resource, as we stated before, we're on item number seven. So, I don't know where that came from as far as the human resource director not being on the books. There's nothing, there's nothing on this, there's nothing in this motion that says anything about a human resource director.
It was in relation to your comment, Mr. Mayor, about why this ordinance is being brought before this board and why a human resource director would not be here to interview this position. That's the only reason that that was stated and at this point, I don't think there has ever been an ordinance in place for a human resource director. That's the line, the reason why that was stated.
My question, trustee, was not about a human resource. My question was about establishing the position and I asked attorney, is this an appointed position? And I never even said human resource director on item number seven. I asked attorney about who has the right to appoint or who has the right to hire a village administrator. Isn't that what I asked, trustee, I mean, Mr. Attorney? So, it was nothing about a human, I didn't say anything about a human resource director on this particular item. We had talked about that already. So, this, this motion here is about establishing the position for a village administrator and I was asking, is that an appointed position? And that's what that clarity was. But now, I'm seeing now where all this was being brought out.
I kind of want to know why does it, or feel that we need a village administrator? Like what is not going on day-to-day now that we need an administrator to come in and do this for over $100,000?
I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to answer that question, trustee. As I said before, on the first six thing, why couldn't we discuss this, but I guess rushed to judgment is exactly whether this rush and do this without talking about it, without trying to come together for the betterment of this village, come together and quit spending the taxpayers' money just because you want to, because I've been prosecuted and doing that and persecuted by, by people that sit in this audience about why didn't I bring it before the, the, the people before we voted on? Obviously, that doesn't hold true for this particular item. These items here, we never talked about, we never deliberated, we never even discussed. This was brought to us and let's vote on it and let's move on, that's it. I don't know about you guys here on the board, but that's not the way you run a government. You do have input, you have a time that you can discuss it, a time where you can ask, the people in the audience can ask questions. You voted on this without question one from the taxpayers who have to support all of these motions that were made. It's going to fall on the back of the, of the taxpayers. Now, everybody here may not pay taxes or it may not make a difference, but this is going to fall. All this litigation is going to come forth for these particular motions, it's going to fall on the taxpayers. And it depends on how much money you pay for taxes, that'll be the share that you got to pay for this, for this action being taken today.
And Mr. Mayor, just, I'm suspicious, not free, so I would just like to ask the board then come back with some cost-saving measures that will establish, you know, an amount equal to what we plan to pay this administrator. Because just to be fair, we need to cut back on something somewhere and I'd like the board to come back with recommendations of where we can cut back.
Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Bell?
No.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Jusinski?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor, I'm, I'm sorry, the next motion is to post and place ads to search for a village administrator. I don't know why that has to be a motion, if you got, if you're going to put that, establish position, you would think that would be, but anyway, there's a motion on the floor to post and place ads to search for the village administrator.
Some move, second.
Moved by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Todd, any question?
Mr. Mayor, if we're going to post and place ads, obviously, we need to have some kind of job description. Do we have a job description? Do we have a, what the duties are, do we have what the salary is expected to be? I don't think we have any of that. How could we post something without any kind of qualifications for expected compensation?
Mr. Mayor, I would hope that that would be on an agenda, upcoming agenda very quickly so we can discuss this aboard, the qualifications we're looking for and the salary that we would be expected to have.
What was the last thing you said?
I said, I would hope that that would be something that we would discuss as a board in another upcoming agenda, not tonight. Tonight, just saying, we want to make a motion to make sure that that process is done.
So, you say you want to discuss this as a board?
Mr. Mayor, you know this is not the first time that this has been done, so why are we doing this?
Yes, it is.
No, Mr. Mayor.
So, I'm asking, you said...
That was my comment, if anybody was...
Okay, I'm asking, you said now you want to discuss it as a board. Okay? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Jusinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. The next item is a motion to hire a forensic auditor. To conduct a forensic audit for the last two years, the village attorney will prepare an RSP for said services. I, I need, this is the motion.
Some move, second.
Moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Brewer. Questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, what's your turn, because obviously, we have a new one coming aboard to do this, and also, what is the purpose of this, of this forensic audit for the last two years and why only two years? So, from my understanding, you have to have some kind of claim or accusation that something is wrong in order to do a financial audit, a forensic audit. So, I don't know if we have that, I haven't seen anything that says... Uh, I haven't seen anything that says that we've done any wrongdoing. Uh, I believe in the, in the audit that we just received back from Melon Cooper that they said that they cannot tell or they did not see that there was any wrongdoing or mismanagement done. Um, so also, can we get a quote for a forensic audit? I believe in the, a couple of months ago, Trustee Brewer did give us something for, I think, $75,000. Uh, however, this is, this is going to be for two years, so I assume that now it's going to double. So it's probably going to cost the village $200,000 because of the forensic audit. And then what happens if we come back and there's nothing wrong? Again, the residents are paying $200,000 for what reason? To uncover what?
Um, I, I do have a question. Uh, we have our attorney here, I'm sure he's been involved in forensic audits in other municipalities. Can you give me a, um, like a quote or a ballpark figure how much a two-year forensic audit is? First thing. And number two, don't, you have to have a scope? You just can't ask for a forensic audit. That's like taking your car and saying, fix it. And you don't know what's wrong, just fix it. So don't you need to find out, uh, does there have to be a scope? So my question to you, uh, Mr. McGrath, is, first of all, can you tell me how much, in a ballpark figure, a two-year forensic audit would be? And then, um, do you have to have a scope?
As far as, uh, audits themselves, I think we should start with that. A regular audit that the, uh, this village has every year is much different than a forensic audit. A regular audit is basically where the auditors come in, they reconcile your accounts. Uh, it's kind of like just looking at somebody's checkbook, comparing it to their bank statement and making sure that things line up. Uh, that's, that's what they do. They come in, takes a couple of weeks. Forensic audits are completely different, they're, they're more specialized, they're more detailed. Um, and they look to see, uh, about changing of funds and different accounts and where monies are going. They, they really, really, uh, dwell into it. As far as the cost and how long, I'm not an auditor or accountant, I can't tell you. Uh, that is why the, uh, RFP has been prepared. It's a request for a proposal from different audit companies. It will come back before this Board. And at that time, you can ask them to come in, talk to them, ask questions. How long do they think it would take? How much, uh, it will cost? Maybe you can negotiate a flat rate, uh, a dollar amount, or if it's too expensive, you decide not to do it. But that's what the proposal's about.
From your past experience with municipalities, you have no idea how much they paid for a forensic audit?
I don't say I don't.
And, um, my question, the second question I have is, um, I do know that there was a couple of municipalities that I talked to mayors about. And the average cost for a one-year forensic audit with a scope, that means that they knew what they're looking for. For a one-year forensic audit is $95,000. So, I'm not saying it's going to be doubled, but it's $95,000 for one year. My question is, to say, Mr. Trustee, why are we going two years? Why are we going back 10 years to find out where all this started? Because 10 years ago, we had a bond rating. 10 years ago, this village had a AA bond rating. Since then, we have not had a bond rating. But the people that you're trying to get rid of now are trying to, um, bring it back to where we can get a bond rating and get money because all villages have to, um, bridge a gap between April and September. So when it comes back to the point where we don't have the money in September to pay these bills of accounts payable and you have the lawyers and everybody else calling and saying, where's my money? Just so you know, I'm hoping that this particular meeting gets out so people can see exactly where the money's going. Because a forensic audit is not cheap and you have to have a reason for it. So you have to be looking for something. It's not like a needle in a haystack or more or less like a needle in a haystack. Because if you don't know where exactly what to look for, it's going to cost that much more money for them to, to go and look for it. So, um, again, who's going to pay for this? The taxpayers. Um, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address this so the residents have a little clarity on why we're doing this. In the past couple of years, there has been several questions raised. We're either the best financial position ever, we've got more money than ever before, we're great, we're in the black, or we're $2 million in the hole. It depends on who you're listening to. Also, has there been $250,000 taken out of one fund and placed God knows where? Well, who knows? You can't get any answers to that. So there's been several times and several instances in the past two years that it has also been stated, as the mayor just said, this didn't just start. It could have been going on for up to 10 years, but nobody has ever taken the time to do the investigation and done a forensic audit. It could very well have been happening for the past 10 years. Is 10 years the way to go? Absolutely. But can we afford that? Absolutely not. Can we afford to at least start with a two-year forensic audit? Peel back the layers. If we find that we need to go further, then at that time, we will be justified in going further and going back. As a new trustee, this is my first meeting, as a new trustee and being responsible for your money, I can't be responsible for what I don't know. And I don't know where we stand financially. I've heard too many situations where we're either way up there or way down there. And thankfully, if you, some of you, this is your first meeting, you've never been here before. You've never heard the finance director say that there hasn't been a bank statement done since July of last year. Seriously, folks? You don't know these things. But these are things that we know as a trustee that we know are just not right. Who's been handling our books? Where are we standing financially? If we don't know, if the old Board doesn't know, if the finance director is struggling to find out and the auditors are doing a cursory audit, how will we ever know where this village stands financially? And how can we make decisions as a Board on accounts payable if we don't even know if we got money in the bank? Because there hasn't been a bank statement that's been reconciled since July of 2018. That's a long time! No, we did not put the, we did not put the finance director on paid leave. The finance director is doing a wonderful job. And he's the one that pointed out that we haven't had a bank rec done since July of 2018. Go home and check your checkbook. Can you write a check without knowing how much money you have in the bank?
Trustee Williams, uh, thank you for your, uh, you know, your, your comment. Uh, I appreciate you caring about our fiscal responsibility. However, you just approved to hire a village Administrator that will cost us $100,000. And then also, you just approved to hire a special legislative council to do an investigation which costs a lot more money. So I'm not sure what you are really concerned about. Honestly, uh, obviously not the finances because you just spent $200,000 about 10 minutes ago.
And this is personal, right? And this is not personal, I want everybody to know, this is not personal.
Okay, um, I, I, you know something? And I know we're in a little bit of emotion, but you did bring up a point. And I said that I wouldn't air laundry out, but obviously, it doesn't matter here to this Board. They want to, but I will explain to the people here and the Board what happened to this infamous $250,000. And I explained it to the Board prior to this one and in executive session, what happened. Obviously, either it wasn't, I didn't explain it correctly, or they chose to keep saying that $250,000 was missing. But let me tell you what happened to the $250,000 that I had to take out of TIF without the Board's approval. At that time, it happened. And then I got, I, I, I talked to the Board and they approved it, it was after the fact. What happened was, I, it came to me on a Friday afternoon. The village, uh, finance director said that we have to pay a bond payment of $250,000 by day's end at 5:00 or for a bond. If we didn't pay that bond payment, because he was trying to get it from other means, but he couldn't do that. He couldn't, couldn't take the money from where he was trying to get it from. So he came to me to tell me that we're $250,000 short to pay this bond payment. And if we didn't do this, the village would be assessed $4.5 million. That means each and every person here that is paying taxes would have to pay in the next year, when the taxes come, to pay that $4.5 million. Rather than do that, yes, I took it upon myself, I said, okay, let's move the money from A to B. I will inform the trustees, the what I did, I'll take the hit for that. But right now, I cannot go back to the village people, the residents, the taxpayers and say, oops, we spent this money. The reason it was spent, he said he had to pay bills. However, the money that was spent was levied for back in August. The check came in August for the levy. That was levied last year before. That's where your money comes in for your levy in August of the next year. That money came in, it was used for paying bills, that's what was told to me, and we don't have the payment now to pay this. So what do I do? A woah was me, what do I do? So that's what I did and I brought it to the Board after the fact, yes, I did. And said, this is what happened, this is what I did and I need you to, to understand and then okay. Even though it was done already, it was moved. Within that Monday afternoon, we got our allotment for administrative fee from TIF. But we couldn't go to TIF and ask for that money because if we tell them we're using it to, to pay off a bond, they'll tell us, no, this is administrative fee, you already levied your people to pay that. So therefore, that money should still be there. That's just one infraction. That's why I said, why don't we go back more than just two years? That's just one infraction. There's been many infractions. And I'm saying right now to everybody on this Board, I have all the infractions and I, and I, and I explained that to the, the previous Board. What is the reason why we don't have that village, uh, finance director? There's several things that went wrong. There's several money that was spent. We've got money that we were given years ago on the overpayment of our state taxes and it was promised then to spend to pay that money back. There was promise that we were going to pay it back on increments. Well, guess what? I guess the state started, got tired of waiting for us to pay it back. So they held our check. $500,000. They held it. We're not giving you your money because you haven't paid us. So I had to make an agreement at that time to pay payments back every quarter for them to release that check. That happened. But no, those are the things that I've got tied up. Usually, you give people three chances, I gave this person four. So yes, but I'm not a person to grandstand and say, well, this is what happened. But I will tell the Board this, I have this stuff in writing. If you're willing to come to my office whenever I'm here, I'm here most of the time, and, and, and see it. Because if it, if it's printed out there, now I know where it came from. Because it is in writing. Of all the infractions that were done over the past year and a half when I first became mayor, of, over, of our finances. I tried to work, I even brought, this Board knows I brought a person in to help out. I brought a person in to help out. And I still didn't, was never to get done what I needed to get done. So it's unfortunate, but like I stated before, I don't put personal business when we're talking. And when, when we're talking about it, I pay taxes here too. I don't want to see my taxes escalate because of a mistake that the village made. And that's exactly why I okay for that infamous $250,000. It didn't go nowhere. It didn't go nowhere in my pocket. It went to pay the, um, the money that was levied for, already levied for, from the taxpayers. So that being said, uh, then we stood up a motion on the floor to, um, to do a forensic audit. Um, as I said before, I don't know why, this is, that's why we should discuss things. That's why things should be discussed in a regular setting. Not, let's vote on it right now and let's do it right now. Because now, as Trustee just stated, you just, with this last thing here, you just obligated the village to have to pay $1 million. Or more. If, if you voted on it, you said yes. So when you start doing these things, I don't want to hear, oh, woah, it's, it's the taxpayers. The people that are sitting here right now are going to be the ones that are going to have to pay for this. What, what is it that we're going to have to take away? I was hoping that we can do more things. I was trying to get a 50/50, I was trying to get a lot of things done with the money that was brought in by the people that you want to sit on the sideline and you don't want to be here anymore. I was hoping that we can get some more money and we do have more money coming in for that reason. But that's, that's what I want to, I, I didn't stop you, Trustee.
No, it's, it's something-
I didn't stop you, Trustee. Okay, I didn't get a chance to discuss this at a regular setting. Nobody got a chance to discuss this at a regular setting.
Mr. Mayor, that question has been asked at least a dozen times in the past year. Where the $250,000 went?
I'm sure the people want to hear it.
Right. That question has been asked at the podium by at least three people over and over again in the past year. That question has been asked by FOIA over and over again in the past year. And never did these residents get an answer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for finally explaining where the $250,000 went. Because these residents have asked for it over and over again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting us know we really do need a forensic audit because our financial situation is worse than anybody else realized. You just put a forensic audit for it. We need a forensic audit for those reasons.
Well, when it's brought to me that we don't have money to pay payroll, we have to take the money out of the water fund to pay payroll, then think about this that you just said. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, please call the room. Motion carries. I'm sure y'all clap when your bill go up.
Yeah. They don't pay no taxes, they don't have to worry about it.
Number 10, motion to conduct day-to-day operations of the village until said time as the village administrator is hired. The village Board directs, and I'm going to have to refer to the lawyers on this one because I didn't know that the Board can direct anything as far as day-to-day operations. And also, how can the clerk compensation be added or taken away or even altered while she's in office?
As far as the day-to-day operations, I would rely on past precedent that this was done in the past by, uh, past boards during the time that, uh, Ms. Turner, who I mentioned before, when she was put on paid leave, it was agreed how certain department heads and different, different, uh, groups within the village would report to the mayor or different ones report to department heads just to keep the, uh, the day-to-day operations running. As far as, you weren't, you didn't have a chance to read the whole, uh, motion, uh, Your Honor, but as far as the village clerk's compensation, or she not, her compensation not being changed as village clerk, it's for assistance in handling the day-to-day operations. It's, uh, my understanding that the finance director or the finance person, uh, Mr. Finch, is here two to three days. Um, and that the village clerk is here, uh, most of the other days. And for her to be compensated, uh, to just make sure that the mail is collected, that phone calls are answered, messages are given to you and other village Board members. Uh, and hopefully, this is on a short-term basis until the village administrator is, is hired.
That's, that's not what they said. It said that the duties of the village clerk, I'm sorry, that they would be, um, the front office. That the village clerk would handle day-to-day operations in the front office. Now, you got rid of the person that was, who was doing that. So before that person was there, they reported it, they reported to me. So now you're saying that past, I don't understand what past practices are there. But I know that back then, when we didn't have a village administrator, when, um, Mayor Hanks took, took, took office and we didn't have an administrator, he wasn't here today. So then the department heads, I'm sorry, the department head that was in, up front there took care of that. Well, since you got rid of that particular aspect, then now, um, you're saying that the village clerk would do that and I have a problem with that. And, and first of all, because I used to take care of that. And now you're, now the Board is saying that they're going to take that away. And, um, as far as the mail, the mail is being done by the front office. They segregate the mail, separate the mail, and I have an assistant that answers the phone calls. There was anything to be done and directed. When you make a phone call, you get a tree. If it's not directed, you, 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 you press a button and it, it goes through whoever it is to their phone. So therefore, I don't understand why the village clerk and you're, and I don't understand how the village clerk or any other person can have their salary, because the salary is still going to be paid from the village, altered during the time that they're sitting as a, as, as an elected official. No one else can get theirs altered. If I went out there tomorrow and started plowing snow and I said I want to get paid for it, tough. But I still don't understand why the clerk would be in charge of anybody up front. Um, because first of all, she wouldn't know what it is that they're doing. Because first of all, she wouldn't know what it is that they're doing. She's not involved in that, she's not involved in that right now, so how would she know? Are you gonna let me speak?
Have we had a motion in a second?
So, why does that need to be, and I'm asking, why does that need to happen? Why does the, and who made that statement, and who agreed to that again? I don't know if I'm gonna get an answer to that, that there would be a compensation. Who was that discussed with? Where did that come from? Who made that statement that there would be a compensation to the clerk for running or for being in charge of up front? Who made that? I don't understand where that came from. And then also, I don't, from where I understand, state statute says that no clerk or myself cannot, their salaries or their money can't be altered while they're in office. Now, as far as, you're talking about a clerk collector, you have a clerk that's right here. That used to be clerk. When she was clerk, there's no, I don't understand. Unless the mayor at the time that she became clerk made it clerk collector, how can you do it in mid-strain? Number one. Number two, how can you give money to a person that's already holding office in mid-strain? So all of a sudden you just say, "Okay, we're gonna give this person more money." I'll give him a dollar. That you cannot do that. So that's what I'm saying, that this particular one is, I think is violation of state statute.
Point of order, we still have not taken a motion in a second.
Well, I wanted to try to give this board, I wanted to try to get this board to believe in the dollar before they took action. Because this right here, I believe, is a violation of state statute. That being said, I'll ask for a motion.
Excuse me, the mayor did not-
I asked for a motion.
The mayor did not state the complete motion, so it seems like it's-
Motion to conduct day-to-day operations of the village until said time the village administrator is hired. The village board directs all the department heads to report to the mayor. Staff in the village hall shall report to the finance director. In Mr. Finch's absence, all village hall staff shall report to the village clerk. The village clerk will be compensated an additional two hundred dollars per week, not for her duties as mayor, but for her assistance in handling day-to-day operations of the village until a village administrator is hired. That part I don't understand, because day-to-day operations is not just the front office.
That's all this motion's protecting.
That's what the motion said.
Are you opening it up, sir?
I asked for a motion.
I make the motion.
Moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Todd, Madam Clerk.
Why, no, a question.
A question, I'm sorry, a question.
So, Madam Clerk, I haven't had a chance to ask you, do you feel that you can take all this responsibility, this extra responsibility for eight hundred dollars a month? Do you think that you can keep your day-to-day duties and manage people along with your minutes and FOIA and whatever else it is that you may do?
Thank you for asking me that question. I'm certain that everyone does not keep Todd on mind, resumes that I've shared and my levels of experience that went on the campaign trail I share with you. So that you know, when I worked with the state, I managed two hundred and seventy-five employees that were doctors, nurses, speech pathologists, educators, all the way down to CNAs. And it was at a long-term care facility that was twenty-four hours a day. So I think that if I could handle that number of staff, I could do five or six.
My next question, Madam Clerk, so this number, I'm not sure where it came from, did you agree to two hundred dollars? Did you, I mean, what made you agree to that number? Why not save five hundred dollars? Why not save a thousand dollars? I just wonder where the number came from. Use your mic. So you, are you okay with the number?
I have no idea where that number comes from. Naturally, I would want more, but when you consider that it is a very temporary position and the condition that the village is in financially, and then I know that all of this that we're talking about out in an open meeting is a violation, because these are all things that really are supposed to be talked about in exec board, but just to humor you.
When did you sign that? This whole thing should have been done.
I've been trying to correct you all evening, so don't get on me.
Don't get on you.
Don't start, don't start.
You okayed this, you brought this to my attention, you saw this.
Mr. Mayor, I think that you need to go back and read the statute that I sent you. I am obligated. When someone calls a special meeting, now we're definitely off task. Excuse me while I educate him for a half a second. When the trustees call a special meeting, and/or when the mayor calls a special meeting, I am obligated to follow the tenants of that statute. And that is what I did. I even had to publish it in the newspaper. Do you know when I, you know when I delivered your information to you? It was Sunday afternoon. Sunday afternoon. Don't you think that I would, I'm not talking to you, I would have rather been at home. Would you shut up? Now.
We have a motion in a second on the floor.
You told him. Take over your meeting, do that. Take over your meeting.
Mr. Mayor, there's a motion in a second on the floor, I do believe we have a motion in a second. Okay.
I would rather not continue answering it so you can see me later and we can really talk.
Call the roll, please. Please call the roll.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
No.
Trustee Jazinski.
For the record, and I'm gonna put it, and I will deliver it to the trustees and the lawyers, I plan on vetoing all the action that was taken today. Well, we're gonna be, and just want to say for the record, I will be vetoing everything that was voted upon today. And I have a basis, because as I said before, we never discussed this, nobody never knew. That being said,
Mr. Mayor, in regards to your veto, Mr. Attorney, do all the motions stand until which time a veto is formally brought before the board? So all the motions that just took place are officially voted on in stance? Okay, thank you.
Public comment.
There we go.
Mr. Mayor, we just reminded, we got another meeting, a whole other meeting.
Okay, well, they decided they wanted to do this. I knew it was gonna take a while, so. You think these people are upset about the money that's going to be spent? But, what the heck. Please state your name.
I can't hear you. Can you turn the mic on?
That's already gone. Forget that. Well, they just now spent it.
Use the microphone.
Village can't afford it. It wasn't voted on.
Okay, no, you're not bad. Can't be bet your- I can't.
Ain't have the money to pay for bed.
I got more time than money. Okay, first thing I said was, we need to all get along. We need to start, stop fighting and just get along. That's the only thing that's gonna bring this village back together, first of all. Second, I was under the impression, we have eight hundred thousand dollars in reserve. I hope that's still there. Third, the two hundred fifty thousand, thank you, Mayor, for telling us where it went. Now, can you tell me if it was returned to where it came from? I don't know if it was supposed to be returned, I don't know how that works. I'll be honest. Now, the other thing, everybody's been saying how we need transparency, and this has not been transparent. Well, guess what? That Friday, that he brought the contracts to the board to be signed so that the HR's, Ms. Strader got her contract, and everybody else got their contracts, that was not transparent either. That came before the board on a special meeting on a Friday. Got me so upset, I ended up in the hospital. I ain't ending up in the hospital again for the Saw village. Not happening. But, that was not transparent either. All the way up till today, it was not transparent. Now let's get it to be transparent.
Beth Zupan, and I have a couple of questions. First off, I'd like to know when this orientation meeting was held that supposedly these conversations took place. And Mr. McGrath, the minute that the conversation turned to discussion of all of these items would have turned into an Open Meeting Act violation, and any subsequent conversations would have definitely been an Open Meeting Act violation as well. So I'd like to know when that meeting took place, because I would like to take that up further. I'd also like to confirm, because Mr. McGrath, you kind of alluded to, the RFP has already been prepared, so I'd like confirmation of that for the RFP, for the forensic audit. You alluded to that in your comments when you were talking to the mayor, when we were talking about that point. My last, second to last comment is about the posting of the ads to search for a village administrator. You can't really post that without a salary in mind, and while you claimed you didn't have a salary in mind, I kind of feel like you probably do, so you need to be open about that with everybody. Although you should be talking about that in executive session, not out here, before you post it. Lastly, the infamous two hundred fifty thousand dollars was discussed with the prior board in executive session more than once. It was supposed to stay in executive session, as all things human resource and personnel-related are supposed to. Other items, personnel-related, also should stay in executive session, and I would remind you all to keep that in mind. Not everything is for public consumption, not everything can be publicly transparent, and we all need to be mindful of that. As much as we want to know everything, we can't. It's for purposes of litigation. When you eliminate people, you terminate people, you can't always say why publicly you're doing so, because you open yourself up to litigation. And trust me, the mayor has not gotten rid of anybody without proper documentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Your Honor and trustees. First of all, I would like to apologize for my behavior. My name is Larry Sapp. I pay taxes.
Sapp.
I own a home here. And I really don't appreciate a board coming in and making these decisions. The way you're doing it is wrong.
Use the mic, please.
It's just wrong. That's my opinion. And I'm the one who's gonna have to foot the bill for it, me and a lot of other people out here like me. I have a lot of respect for you, Ms. Williams, you know that. I'm angry. I know there's a lot of racism and bias going on in here, I've seen it firsthand myself. It's been supported. People call her Mayor Boy, which is akin to nigger, and affront to a black man, is affront to all black men, is unnecessary, it shouldn't be conducted that way. Things that went back and forth, it needs to stop. We need to conduct business to the benefit of the residents of Saw village. That's why we elected you all, to do that. So I hope there's some way, Mayor, that you may be able to file an injunctions to stop these actions, because there should have been some community means help, and you all find out how we feel about these things. Nobody asks us, although we elected you all, nobody seems to care about how our money is being spent. Not even giving us the respect to let us know what's going on and why it's going on. We have a right to know. That's just my opinion.
Bernadine Hopkins. I just wanted to mention that I believe I'm one of the people that asked about that two hundred fifty thousand, and I kind of got my information from a county's payroll, I just want to put that out there. The other thing, what I wanted to know was, was Dr. Strader approved by the board? You said something about executive session, these things were discussed, and I'm just simply not clear on that. Was it approved by the board? Or was this individual appointed by you? Is he appointed by you with the approval of the board, or, I don't know. So again, these are just questions. You did mention too, that information about personnel is discussed in executive session, but you were, I guess you were being sarcastic, but you said a consultant is not personnel. So would that mean that things about the consultant can't be discussed out of the open? And those are my questions. So thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. My name is Diane Sapp. My question is probably to trustee-
Use the mic, please.
My question is concerning the forensic audit. My research shows that this village has been in a problem since 2009 with the financial deficit. So how is a two-year audit going to explain 2009 if the problems go back more than ten years? I'm just curious.
Judy, wait your turn.
Judy Castor. First of all, I would like to say that today is the first time in a whole lot of years that I see transparency, and I'm hearing things that people need to know. Those of you sitting here putting these new trustees down, forget that a short time ago, they were sitting where you are. They were sitting here, they were asking questions and not getting answers. They were putting FOIA's in and not getting answers. They went every route they could go, and we helped, and we couldn't get answers. There was no transparency. I've asked questions a thousand times and can't get answers to them. The HR lady and the way she's getting paid is wrong. Anybody that pulls in a paycheck like she does doesn't belong- Anybody that pulls in a paycheck like she does, doesn't belong in Sawt Village. We don't have that kind of money. We've been milked for two years on that kind of money and you're giving her more. You said seventeen hours, that's what you promised. And if I remember correctly, it was trustee Zupan that wanted you to say it a second time, to verify she would not work more than seventeen hours a week. You verified it and immediately let it go. Immediately got her involved in other things. Immediately paying her when there are no meetings, no negotiations, she's still getting paid. You won't answer the questions, the FOIAs won't answer the questions. And now, she's involved in finances. We want to know what kind of background she's got that makes her okay for that. Does that make us bad people? Hell, no. We want answers and we weren't getting them. And I thank you trustees for what you done tonight. If that gets us answers, then we're ahead of the game. If it's gonna cost us something, it can't cost us as much as what we're paying HR. Pat Couch. And I also would like to thank you new trustees for stepping up and starting a process that maybe we will find some transparency. For all these new people that are here that have never attended a board meeting, that doesn't know the two years that we've been through hell just to get answers about certain issues, like the fire hydrants, time and again, I ask about fire hydrants because it affects every single one of us. Never once did I get an answer from this Mayor or the previous board. I was told by someone in the past that the Mayor instructed them not to tell me how many fire hydrants are down. That's neither here nor there now, it's a done deal. Also, all the time, it took a year and a half to get rid of a dog that was attacking my neighborhood, me in particular, but for some reason, it took a year and a half to get rid of that dog because it was vicious. It attacked people, it attacked animals, and for some reason, that animal stayed there forever and a day. Videos of that animal, but for some reason, the Mayor has a bone to pick with me, but that's okay. Don't look so surprised, Mr. Mayor. Things are gonna change and racism has no place in this meeting and in the hallway. And the people that are talking racism, shame on all of you.
Make this quick with a lot of your comments. The forensic audit, I've even said it should go back ten years, so, because two years doesn't tell you hardly anything, but how can you spend money for the two years and then you'll come back and say, "I'm gonna do it for the ten years"? I don't understand that either, but I understand what you're saying as far as no transparency. I guess tonight was a preview of how transparent it's gonna be here in the village. As far as Dr. Strader being approved and Mr. Williams, why he being approved by the board, yes it was. Those appointments were made with the agreement of the board, the consent of the board at the time, yes they were. If that was the case, if that didn't happen, I'm sure there would be, somebody would've said something, but those appointments that were put in those places were made with the consent of the board. And it's a shame that we have to, and it is a personal, when you attack a person on what you feel, that they should or should not get paid, what you think their qualifications are without knowing what their qualification, that is personal. I don't care how you slice it, that's personal. You don't know anything about a person, but you're gonna say this person shouldn't get paid, this or that. We pay more money out for lawyers than we do for that. We were paying more money out for lawyers back in the day, six and seven hundred thousand dollars a year, but it was nothing said about that, the prior administration. But now, we got control of it, we're trying to keep control of it. Obviously, that's not gonna happen now, but to say what a person does not deserve, you slice it up all you want, then it's a personal attack on a person. Without knowing, without having factual evidence to say, this person is not this or this person doesn't fit this particular criteria, but by you saying that it doesn't, does not mean that it is a personal attack. I'm not sure about the OMA violations. I would think that they talked, that was talked about, something that's gonna be voted on later, was talked about and everybody wasn't there and it was not talked in front of the public, I would think that would be a violation. And then, the first thing that we need to, if it would've been done before sworn in, then it shouldn't have been done. It shouldn't have been done, if they were not, I'm just saying, if they were not elected officials, it should not have been made, there should not have been an ordinance made on the orders of a private citizen, it shouldn't have been. As far as the resident, I will say this, and that's a true, very true statement. When the resident said tit for tat, I was hoping that that wouldn't happen. I was hoping that one day, we can divide this aisle. I was hoping that one day, we can reach out and respect one another. That we can reach out and embrace one another. Because we're here for the common good, this is your village. We have people that come here all the time wanting to do business, and I said this back when I was a trustee, wanting to do business. Not behind what you heard today. Not behind what you saw today. I mean, why would you want to invest millions of dollars into this village? And we're arguing about personalization. We're arguing about what's the money, we're gonna put a person, or we're gonna do this because, just because we think we can, instead of let's talk about it. What happened to the point, "Let's talk first and react second"? That didn't happen today. That's what I was so upset about. It didn't happen. I was hoping that we would table this until such time, but people held better on making this happen because it was a personal attack on me. It's not about you residents, it's about me, but that's okay. I can defend me, I can take care of me. But to put other people's lives, reputation at stake out there is a total travesty and it shows, it shows exactly what we're supposed to not be made of here in this village. To attack people just because, to take away and augment their livelihood just because you feel you can do that, you're in the seat now and now you playing that role, "Let me take away this". What happened to "Let's talk about it"? "Let's discuss it"? Why did I have to get this on Sunday at five o'clock that this meeting was taking place? All this paperwork was already done on Sunday that nobody knew about. But it's not personal. The last thing is the comments from the board. I'll start with trustee Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so this is my first board meeting. I see a lot of new faces, but it's not my first board meeting as a resident. I've been coming to board meetings for thirty-two years. I served as the village clerk for eight years. A lot of what's happening tonight, this is not the first time. A lot of what's been said tonight was the first time it happened, was not the first time. This has been going on for the last two years where most of the people on the board did not know what was going on until five minutes before the meeting happened. That happened several times in the past couple of years. A lot of people attending this board meeting tonight have no idea what has gone on in the past two years, much less the last ten. Would I like a forensic audit for the last ten years? Absolutely. Can we afford it? No. Peel back the onion. Okay, we see something in two years, we need to go further, we will. Lack of transparency. Every single time, somebody comes up here to ask a question or puts in a foyer, we are told, "No documents exist". Seriously? We have a stack of FOIAs from residents this thick where no documents exist? I'm talking, no documents? No, no, no resumes, no invoices, no reports, no documentations exist? Seriously? Open and transparent? I've been asking. When I left in 2017 as a clerk, all accounts payable records, all financial records, all audits, any type of information you wanted was online. Since I've been coming back to the meetings, I took a year off and worked for another municipality. I'm here now and for a year, I've been coming back and I've been begging. Where is the financial information on the website? Why can't people see the accounts payable? Why can't people see what financial position we are in? They refuse to put the financial information on the website. Open and transparent? Talk about people's lives. Two employees lost their job without anybody knowing what was going on. It wasn't discussed by the board. They have families, they have situations, they had bills. It wasn't discussed by this board? It wasn't agreed upon by this board? They didn't get an opportunity to defend themselves. One employee was here for twenty years, one was here for about eight. They weren't even given an opportunity. We're trying to give people an opportunity to defend themselves. Open and transparent? I would not be putting myself in this position. This job means too much to me. My reputation means too much to me to put myself in this position unless I felt I was doing what was right. Now, you can sit there and judge me and you can go home behind your computers and your fingers can fly. All I'm saying is, you don't know the story. And until you do, go ahead and judge me, because I report to somebody higher than this. And believe me when I tell you, I do not come here without doing my homework. When I was standing up as a resident, I did my homework before I spoke. I did my research before I spoke. Since I've been elected, I've been trying to get attorney's bills. No, you can't get that. I've been trying to get union contracts. No, you can't get that. Trustee Brewer's been trying to get information for two years. No, you can't get that. Open and transparent? Really? This is what you think you have? But you'll find out, because I don't want this to be your last meeting that you came to. It's your first for money of you? Make another meeting, or two, or three, or four. Because a lot of things that were voted on and passed in the last two years inappropriately will be brought back to the table. Because a lot of things were done without the board knowing what was going on and we will be doing. Excuse me, I have the floor. I have the floor. As far as how much it's gonna cost, trust me, would you rather pay eighty-five dollars an hour for somebody to take care of the front office staff or two hundred dollars a week? We did not do this lightly. We did not do this lightly. And I don't believe it was a violation of the Open Meetings Act because the Mayor set the meeting up with the attorneys for the trustees to have an orientation. At that time, we asked questions and we said what direction we felt the village should go in. The residents appointed new people for a reason. Apparently, they weren't happy with the direction the other board was going in. I'm sorry and a lot of you are gonna disagree, but again, I'm gonna tell you, I wouldn't be putting myself in this position. I know you're all gonna go home and I want you to. Go home and think about what happened tonight. Are you gonna look at it objectively or you already got your mind made up? Are you gonna wait for the hearings to come out and for the information to come out and look at it objectively or you already got your minds made up? I can't stop you either way, but believe me when I tell you, I'm glad the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars finally got brought out because we weren't told anything when it was foiled. We weren't told anything when we stood at the podium. So, what I'm trying to say is, the lack of transparency didn't start tonight. This lack of transparency's been going on for two years and it probably went on a lot longer than that, just like the finances went on a lot longer than that. But you know what? This is my first meeting and I can't sit here knowing that I don't know how much money this village has when I get ready to approve an accounts payable. Is it gonna cost us a little money to find out where we're at? Yeah. Is it worth it? In my opinion, but I'm just one person and you all had one vote. And I'm sorry if you feel you wasted your vote on me. Personally, I'm gonna repeat it again. I would not be sitting here putting myself in this position if I didn't feel that these were the right moves to make.
Trustee McGrath. Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to welcome the new visitors. I hope this will be your first of many. I'm nervous, I don't, you know, this is something new to me and there's only one way we're gonna learn. I read them, I understand them, and we voted. We were voted in to try to make a difference. That's why I ran, was to try to make a difference. I've lived in this town for over fifty years. That's why I'm here. This is my hometown, this is our hometown. Let's make it one. Thank you.
Trustee McGrath. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing I want to say is that, to the Mayor, I was not invited to that meeting with the attorneys, so it had a meeting without all the trustees, that's a problem. Second thing, I think that Ms. Betcher asked about eight hundred thousand dollars, so yes, it is still in the reserve, we still do have it. However, in my opinion, it shouldn't be used as a piggy bank. That's money that we have planned for an emergency and not for everyday expenses because what happens when that money runs out? Then what do you do when we don't have the eight hundred thousand dollars and we have to make a bond payment that we can't make? So, that's just food for thought. I just want to say, I'm very disappointed with actions that the board took tonight. This agenda will probably cost the residents a hundred thousand dollars and they might not see it today, but it will happen in due time. And it's not fair that this is on the residents' backs, they don't deserve this, but at the end of the day, the board voted and we go with the board says. And trustee Williams, thank you for your comments, I heard them. And you mentioned something about being fair and if I have to say so to myself, if you were fair, I believe that the people on the agenda that you just laid off, I believe it would be fair to them to ask them, what is it they're doing wrong or what the problem is before you just lay somebody off. That's being fair and that's all that happens, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Giselle. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I ran for trustee, the residents, the biggest concern the residents has was that this board was not being transparent. And for years, we were asking for financial documents and every time, the FOIAs would come up that there was no documents on file. So, I made a promise to the residents, or whoever voted for me and talked to me, that we would bring transparency back and that's what we intend on doing. Thank you. Trustee Brewer.
To the residents, I've been here for the last two years. And since I've been here, there's a lot of things that's been happening and a lot of violation of the rule of law. The Mayor has taken upon himself to be dictators for this village. He has altered the salaries of the HR person, the finance director, all without the consent of the board. None of these people were approved with the vice and the consent of the board and that's something I've been saying for the last two years. The Mayor does not have that authority just to appoint people without the vice and consent of the board. That's the rule of the law and that's how it's supposed to go. Now, as far as the forensic audit is concerned, this situation has been going on for twenty years plus. You know we have problems. We have been having problems for years. Now, with Mohan being fired, Sutton comes in, she believes in operational transfers, nobody knows what that is. When Gregor left because of some kind of felony going on with finance, and then in the words of our current finance director, "We're two million dollars in a hole." I'd like to know how we got there. I have asked for documents since I've been here and I can't get them. I'm a trustee and I should have access to any document here in the village. I can't get a report. I have been told by some department heads that I didn't need that. Told that the Mayor said not to give verdicts that stuff. We are trust, I was voted in as a trustee. I'm supposed to have some information about what's going on here. If you're gonna keep it a secret, I'm gonna let you know they're keeping a secret from you. There's no way in the world that we should know what's going on with our finance. The Mayor never consulted about altering of the salaries. Next thing you know, additional duties were put on the HR person. We never brought that before the board, I'm saying outside the board. It was talked in executive session, but that's supposed, anything about finances will be brought out in the public, as I understand it. When the contracts came up, nobody told us about it. Next thing you know, we was back there, had to call the police because it was getting so, you know, out of hand. We didn't know about the contracts. Again, the Mayor says he's open and honest. He's open and honest only to those trustees he was loyal to. Our job is to do what's in the best interest of ten thousand people here. We can't care about what they think. So, my thing is that I have done as much as I can do. I think, I know for a fact that we have violated a lot of rules of law and for them just to not tell us where the money is, you gotta think about, if the two hundred and fifty thousand- You got to think about, if the $250,000 you just not finding out, why can't they tell us back there in 2017, watch it all off? There's a lot of money just, we don't know where it's at. And I have asked and asked for the money. If you can't have, give documents, how can you make an informed decision? Every pay period they come here, they want to pay this, we want to pay that. We don't know what the money is, even if we got any money. I believe in transparency. You got to show us where the money is. And every week we come in here, we should have something in writing to say where the money is. What's happening with the Iceland grant? What happened to that $80,000? What's happened to the Bulletproof Best Grant? We don't know because nobody gives us any information. I thought trustees, we're here to watch the money. We can't watch anything we can't see. When you ask for a report, we should be given one. As simple as that. Then we can make an informed decision. That's why when we come in here for payroll, we want to vote on payroll. Yes, you should be paid for payroll. They work, they should get paid. But we should have something in writing saying how much that person's gonna get paid. And with the vendors come in, everybody comes in with professional service. What does that mean? You have paid some of these attorneys $35,000, $40,000 of pay period and we don't know what it's for. Professional service to do what? We have asked for these things and we haven't got it. So that being said, without, and it'll continue because we need to know where the money is. Our primary job as trustees is to watch our money because this is my money too. And as far as, if we had all this money, you tell me why we have fire hydrants out of work? You tell me why we have all these water main breaks around here? Where's all that money going? We don't have the money, why? But we need these things for the health and safety of our families. But everybody seems to just gloss over it. Why don't we have any streetlights? Where's all that money? We have MFT funds. I don't know if we have it. I don't say, I'm saying, we don't know. Why isn't this information provided to us? Because somebody wants to keep it to themselves. You can't run the village unless trustees are there to help you. And that's the end of my report.
Trustee Todd?
I have nothing at this time.
Entertaining motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Five minutes, we will have the committee of the whole, we will stay here in the race, have to go down there and we'll have the tables up for the presenters.